I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Here.
Your Honor.
Press for lobby case. The agenda.
I do not want questions asked.
I second. Second in the paper. All right. Here is a public comment. We're going to remember the public wishing to make comment on agenda items. We do have several presentations here. Just a second.
I have something I want to talk about.
Okay. On the agenda?
No.
Okay. We'll get it at the end of the meeting.
They said I didn't have to sign up. The girls in the office next door.
He doesn't have to sign.
No. Is it an agenda item or just a general comment?
No.
Okay. Okay, the general comment.
Sorry for you.
I won't forget it. You're right there in front row. Consent agenda. We're going to go through the approval of the vouchers for the week of April 18th. Approval in the minutes. For the week of April 18th, a letter of support for the Boys and Girls Club of the Olympic Peninsula regarding the Grand Angeles new unit construction. Letter of support regarding air service in Grand Angeles and the proclamation recognizing April as sexual assault awareness month.
I move to approve the consent the agenda has presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So reports and presentations. This is, we just passed the proclamation recognizing April as sexual assault awareness month, and I know Becca Corby, the Director of Healthy Families, is here, and she has some special presentations.
So, I'll go over them now. And it's nice to meet Commissioner's office. I've made the opportunity. So, Commissioners, thank you very much. Hotshots, thank you very much. Peanuts, thank you very much. This is the golden opportunity during sexual assault awareness month, which I'm sorry, I'm ding dong, it's already the 26th, and it should have been done earlier in the month, but I forgot. So, I just wanted to say that for those of you who do not understand sexual assault, sexual assault is a horrible, heinous, violent crime, and it's on the rise. And for those of you who think it might not be in this community, you're dead wrong. This is a very, very scary community sometimes, as it is globally. Just a little tiny piece of data, and then on the line, we have the only nationally accredited children's advocacy center on the northern peninsula, and the first nine months of this year, we have served 66 children. All of last year, we served 47. So, that is a huge increase. What we at Healthy Families of Clough County and Prosecutor's Office and law enforcement and Child Protective Services and the mental health communities know is that we are seeing more, hearing more, caring for more, and working harder than ever. And this cannot be done without the help of some very special people. The awardees today are receiving what's called the gratitude award. This started, I think, in 2000 and something, and I think we're in year eight or nine. And this is where a collective group of people who sit on a multidisciplinary team, the Clough County Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Task Force, and me, make the decision on who receives this award and why. And these are people who have, this is a small tribute to the excellence of their work, but more importantly, it's a tribute to their hearts. So, this year, and I've always cried during this thing. Bill said, "No crying," but I always do, because I'm so moved. I'm moved by what they do and how they do it. And the first awardee this year is Jessica Hernandez, who is the Executive Director of Food Bank. So, Jessica. So, here's the scoop. Jessica is like a butterfly and a bumblebee altogether, because she does not hold still.
That's true.
She is incredibly bright, very kind, very compassionate, and for the dynamics of sexual assault, oftentimes, you lose everything. You lose your ability to make choices. You lose your ability to stand up for yourself. You oftentimes will lose your home. Food, shelter, clothing, basic needs, that those of us who are privileged to never have to worry about, sometimes forget. So, Jessica makes sure that the people we work with and people that we don't work with who come into her have exactly what they need, when they need it, and their bellies are full. So, thank you for your work.
Yeah.
Next on the list is Detective Brian Knudsen. Brian, if you would come up. Well, I'm going to say just a few words, because Mr. Bossman wants to say more. I would like to say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you." Brian is one of the key people in our community who has made our Children's Advocacy Center what it is. We are an entity to be reckoned with. Don't mess with the babies on Brian's watch. And it's very, very beautiful to watch this man work, to watch him in a skilled, kind, and compassionate way interview these most fragile victims.
Well, thank you. Actually, I wanted to make my comments with both Brian and Amy up here. I will say this. Congratulations on Brian, but don't accept it until Becca signs it.
The sexual assault awareness month. The next awardee is Detective Amy Bundy. And her tiny package. Well, what do I say? Amy Bundy is very special. Amy has a heart you wouldn't know it when you first meet her, because she is one tough cookie. I want her in that dark alley when I'm in trouble. This is an extraordinary woman, soon to be mother. She will be an extraordinary mother. She has taught all of us what it is to help take care of victims and their children. Amy, I know personally, has gone to a home just to ensure that the mom was okay. Now, there are many, many officers who do that, but this particular situation was at her own risk, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just add a couple things. Of course, I'm very proud of Amy and Brian. I have a little stake in both of them. Brian, when he was hired, I was his FTO some time ago, and thoroughly outstanding young man. And Amy was one of the first hires that, actually not one of the first, one of the first 10 hires I made as sheriff. And she came over from Watcom County and sat down in my office and said, "I'm going to be a deputy." And I don't have the olden drive now, but let's see what we can do. Well, she went over to Juve, worked at Juve for several years, and Pete won't forgive me to this day.
No.
That she, when we had, when she tested, she came out number one, and we hired her. And she's been patrol deputy, she's now a detective, and as indicated, she's soon to be a mother-to-be. So, my real comment on this is that it's all about cooperation, collaboration, it's working with the community. That's what policing is all about, is that we police essentially community standards, and we're not successful unless we work with our partners. And Healthy Families with Becca, where is she? Over here. It's been my pleasure to work with this young lady for what, years now?
Oh, wait.
When we were first introduced, I regret to say that there wasn't a culture of cooperation as thorough in the sheriff's office as it is right now.
I brought him to the light side.
It was, actually, it started out a little strained, but it worked out awesome, and I appreciate this young lady, and I appreciate what they do.
Okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. So, I'm going to just tie up a few more minutes, because there's something on a less jovial note that I need to talk to you about, because I now have your ear, and I think that it's a set of good ears. Our system is irretrievably broken. Oh, gee, Merry Christmas, I forgot Michelle. The fourth and final recipient, I'm such a jerk. The fourth and final recipient is Michelle Devlin. If you would come up here. Gee. It's not that you're irrelevant. Okay, thank you so much. Michelle Devlin is the Chief Criminal Deputy Prosecutor, and Michelle is, along with her boss and her leader, they have turned around what's happening in Prosecutor's Offices. Bill so generously said it was strained. Well, that's an understatement for what it was for prosecution. It's not that, it's not that they didn't know what to do, it's that their hands were terribly tied in many ways. Can you fix my hand for me? I feel very stupid. Michelle Devlin brings to the table an intellect that, I'm pretty smart, I'm pea greener than me. This is a bright woman. She brings a commitment to understanding justice that has been eye-opening for me. I have been able to disagree with her on occasion, and it's never not been civilized. I understand, the first time we met, I was pretty hard on her, and she was a little concerned, and so I had to gentle it up, because she's a fragile flower. Thank you. You are brilliant, you are good, you are leading, you're Deputy Prosecutor as well, and you're very smart to have, Mar. So, thank you. Did you have a comment, one of the day?
Just briefly, and that is, you know, one of my, one of my true pleasures as prosecutor is having the opportunity to work with some really talented people on the second floor of the county courthouse. Michelle is one of those folks, Becca is another, and we relish our opportunity to forge positive relations with all stakeholders within the system, healthy families included. And so, my job is to support the people who work for me. They make it easy, frankly, they fight the good fight, and when we're dealing with crimes against children, crimes of the sexual nature, we're really dealing with a truly insidious category of crimes that are often under-reported. They fly under the radar, and I think it's long past due that they take center stage in a court of public opinion and also in the courtroom. So, Michelle, my hats off to you, as well as all the other deputies. And Becca, we really enjoy working with Healthy Families.
I'll say maybe as brief as I can. As I said in my faux pas moment, the system is very broken. For those of you who don't understand the court system or don't work with it, it's broken. And the only way broken things work is for people to repair them and make them work. Understand? A cult is no good without members. You get members, they can have a cult. A school doesn't receive funding if there are no students, and a system cannot work if people are not proactive in forcing it to work. What I've seen in my 13 years of doing this work, which I love and hate simultaneously, is that, A, some people working within the system are lazy, just like all of you who have a job, you have lazy staff who work with you. Some people are ignorant, some people are brilliant. Whatever it is, everyone brings their piece of pie to the table, and it is our collective responsibility to make all these players work. The four awardees that you saw today are people who will not tolerate mediocrity. They will make their systems work. It is our job collectively to support law enforcement, to support all of the people in the, in the system. But you need to start waking up, talking to your neighbors. This is a hello to you. I'm knocking on the doors of your brain. You need to watch what your elected officials are doing. Do you understand? And you need to call them. I can pick up the phone and call Mark Nichols any day of the week. I can pick up the phone and call Bill Benedict any day of the week, and action happens now. This is a beautiful thing. Go to your courtrooms, find out when there are rape cases and child molestation cases, and go watch. You watch what's happening in your courtrooms. It is inconsistent, it is sometimes a shock, and sometimes, I just have no clue what someone is thinking. We depend on those sitting on the bench. We depend on them to dole out justice the right way. We need to encourage them, we need to support them. We pay them, they are our employees, are they not? We need to help them know more. The manifestations of sexual abuse on child victims carries into adult survivors of child sexual abuse. It changes the fabric of people's lives. If we, as a community, are allowing a message to be sent that this is dismissed or less important than a verbal tone, we have a problem. So, it is time. I don't want any new friends, so it's easy for me, but it is time. Talk to each other, talk to your neighbors, talk at your churches, talk at your knitting circles, I don't know what you all do, talk at your bars, talk about it, and if you want to start helping me do a court watch, this isn't a vigilante, this isn't a head hunting, this is to encourage improvement of our system. We're seeing that in the Prosecutor's Office, we're seeing it in law enforcement. Advocacy, we're fabulous, we still have a long way to go, but we're good. Child Protective Services is trying to do better, but watch what's happening in your courts. I'm done. Thank you so much, all. I really appreciate it.
Yes, I had an opportunity last Saturday to attend a fire conservation area groundbreaking the mouth of the Lyra River. Had a very good turnout, and really appreciate the work the North Olympic Land Trust is doing, most importantly, who have years organized this project, and what I like about it is that they have stewards, the North Olympic Land Trust. Not a lot of people in that organization, but a lot of volunteers, so I have a lot of good job on that. Commissioner, your comments?
Yes, I'm going to be away Wednesday Thursday and Friday at the Washington County Administrator's Conference, and I've asked Ross Kyler to be acting administrator in my place. I will be available by phone, but somebody has to be on the ground to take care of some of the event emergencies come up that I can't be able to mention, so I'd like to announce that.
Contracts and amendments to a two-way agreement, Washington State Department of Social Health Services for Secure Crisis Residential Center.
I move to approve the agreement with the Washington State Department of Social Health Services for Secure Crisis Residential Center.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. Two Bs, an amendment, one with Washington State Department of Social Health Services for Secure Crisis Residential Center and Department of Commerce to bridge two contracts together.
I move to approve Amendment One with Washington State Department of Social Health Services for Secure Crisis Residential Center and Department of Commerce to bridge two contracts.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. Two Cs, is an agreement, contract with McCrory Carpet One for carpet replacement with Superior Court Clerk, the amount of $13,646.
I move to approve the contract with McCrory Carpet One for carpet replacement for the Superior Court Clerk.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. Two Bs, an amendment, one with the Department of Health and Human Services to change the correct period of performance and different tax name for DSHS.
Move to approve Amendment One with Department of Health and Human Services.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. Two Es, an agreement of the Clough County Parks and Rec District One Swim Aquatic and Recreation Center for grant funds to the Opportunity Fund Program, the Health Finance, the Natorium Air Handling Unit, Emergency Replacing Project.
I move to approve the agreement with Clough County Parks and Rec District One, also known as Swim Aquatic and Recreation Center, for grant funds to the Opportunity Fund Program.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments?
Michelle, sign them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. I've been to a board to bid opening for the fresh rock to product the aquatic contract.
You have three bids.
Three bids.
I have a response to the bid from Puget Sound Surfacer's Inc. However, their conclusion is that with regard to this call for bids, it is unfortunate that they will be unable to participate.
I have a bid from Del Hert Industries, the amount of $466,011.60, and they do have their bond attached.
Motion. Yeah, I move that we forward the two bids that we received to the Public Courts Department for further consideration.
Second. Let's move to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Here is. Opening for the fairgrounds, floral barns, structural and food plants.
I've got a bid from, forgive me if I pronounce this incorrectly, Hope Construction in Grand Angeles, and their base bid amount is $166,787.
And I have bid from Alder Road Construction Incorporated, their bid $154,658.00 and no sense, and they have a bid on attached.
I move that we forward these two bids to Parks Recreation and Facilities Department for further consideration and recommendation to the board.
Second. Let's move to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Administration, resolution of re appointing a member to the homelessness task force, Kenrich, appointed as a Serenity House Representative, fill an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2017.
Move to approve resolution, reappoint Kenrich, the police desk.
Second.
Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget, approval of budget modifications for the week of April 11th, the amount of $400.
I move to approve the budget modifications for the week of April 11th.
Second. Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. By immediate resolution adopting the following supplemental appropriation, Sheriff, Operation Stone Garden, receipt of grant $310,045.
Move to approve the resolution adopting the following supplemental appropriation, Sheriff, Operation Stone Garden, receipt of grant $310,045.
I second.
Let's move to second it. Any questions, comments? Sheriff's already left, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Community development, six A, a proposed update to the 1992 countywide planning policy.
I move to approve. I, let's hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
I think we needed a resolution, we were just calling for the process.
I think so. The letter, Steve, is here.
You want a letter or a resolution? Actually, I don't think we're, I'm sure what we're docking here.
Well, Steve, so in your packet, and the title was a little misleading, so what we're really asking for is to initiate the process with the cities of Swim, Forks, and Grand Angeles, so your decision today is to authorize sending the draft letters in your packet.
Thank you. I move to authorize sending the letter to the cities of Swim, Grand Angeles, and Forks to invite their participation in the countywide planning process.
Second. Let's move to second it. We had a board session this couple weeks ago, we've authorized, I think we thought we were just, we were just going to move forward and send the letter, so that's cool.
Okay.
Okay. It's not even really move forward and send the letter.
Very good.
So, it's moved in second to authorize DCD to send the letter on behalf of the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. No public works, public hearing in two minutes, so I know there was a couple, Bill wanted to make a comment, so Bill here?
Yeah, general comment on any topic for the board. Just getting even out of this.
To the Lee, to 606 Deer Park Road, born and raised here. First of all, I'd like to thank Mary Ellen for the great change in the building department. It's down 180 degrees, and it's a pleasure to be around there now. But what I'm here for is, I just replaced my septic system up on Deer Park for just under $25,000. That's not my issue. My issue is up on Benson Road, there's this little old lady who has her nephew, and probably no choice of hers, moved in the back of the house with a trailer, and taken water and power from her house and dumping raw sewage within 50 feet of the well. And the community, the health department knows about it, Sheriff's been up there and... And the community, the health department knows about it, sheriff's been up there with drugs and everything. And after spending my money on a new septic system, which is required, I think it's a bunch of crap that nothing can be done with this guy because he's obviously breaking the law. And all the laws seem to be against homeowner and poor perpetrator. And I don't think that's right. I don't know.
You know, the homeowner's actually filed a little complaint.
She tried to get a restraining order and it was denied for whatever reason. I just, the septic issue is my issue now, of course, the drugs.
The septic issue, we can look into from code enforcement with an official complaint from the property owner.
They know about it.
She may not have made a complaint.
Well, I'm making it.
Are you helping?
Mary Ellen will look into that and we're naming the sheriff's office.
Okay. And two of the neighbors up there would not want to be identified, but also complaining to be involved.
It's just that it's a property rights issue. The landlord isn't making a complaint, it's more difficult to get out.
Well, it's not really. It's, you know, if you're dumping your raw sewage out in the middle of nowhere and you're not supposed to be doing that. It's, I think that something should be done, something should really look into it.
I think they will. Mary Ellen's here, she's writing notes.
All right.
Your point's well taken, though, with regard to the appearance of a double standard. I appreciate the standing up in the sense of...
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else wish you to make a general comment before the board?
Yes, sir.
I'm Ted Conley from Easy Pond downtown Port Angeles, building a new store in the county out where the Oak and King used to be. Brian, my manager, and I happened to, last week, we're probably out paperwork for licenses and one thing another, farm licenses. And we got online and we kept looking at the county's rules for pond brokers. And the last time they were written was in 1956. They're so far out of date with the state and the city. I have three different pieces for you folks, one with the county and one with the state that I would like to give to you so that you could look at them and make some sort of a decision as to maybe updating those things. And they have, they have things in there like, well, for example, like, you know, when the purchaser of pond, nothing to be removed from the business until expiration of ten days out of the law's thirty days. And this is the county's thing. They say no one from the age of eighteen to twenty-one is allowed to sell anything or pond anything. And that is really archaic. And there's just several other things in there that you folks might take a look at and take a look at the cities and the states. And we've been in business now for nearly thirty-five years with a very good working rapport with the police department and the sheriff department. Don't have any trouble with anybody. And we follow the rules. But these rules need to be updated. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I will point out it was amended in 2009.
There's more.
It has been amended more recently.
That amendment was just for license fees, not anything to do with the rules.
That's exactly.
Well, it sounds like it's clearly time for another look and update. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish you to make a comment before we start the public hearing?
Commissioner Doherty?
Morning. My name's Mike Doherty, 617 South B in Port Angeles. I don't know if the board attended any of the meetings last week with National Park Service or the highway people, as soon as the department did. It seemed like there were a couple of challenges that they mentioned, and I'm just going to urge the county to have some leadership, kind of look into that. The one thing when I heard from the federal highway in there was the surplus pavement coming off the peel of Lake Crescent. And what they're going to do with it, so as I understood it, and this will be very differently, the contracts can be very flexible, let the contractor decide what to do with it. To me, that's a great resource. So I hope the department, Joe, Pat, whoever's working on it, would be looking at that. And I kind of drove around, I know that area pretty well, and there's some reload spots if you're going west, of course, down Lower Barrel and that rough corner. Up at the end near, end of Lake Sutherland, there's those two places that are old state highway. One I know is still in state ownership. So if you could store some of it and have a reload there and then work with Lakeside and reprocess it. And when ODT is being paved in the phases around the lake through the tunnels, it would seem like, from what I remember from Roads and Bridges magazine articles, not being an engineer, but it's an appropriate mix for a low-volume, low-weight traffic like the trail could be. Even though I've always thought in emergencies, that trail could be an emergency ambulance route, for instance, if there was a slide on Crescent, you could open it up for things like emergencies, that will one-lane piloted traffic through. Won't be built probably to that standard, that would keep the county's liability protected, but still in an emergency, you might have a biting wildfire or something like that. And then, I still was a believer, I could never get a second, I shouldn't really be supportive on this, but I think it's way past time to reuse asphalt roofing. And roofers tell me now, and we heard on the record when the board first discussed it a couple of years, three years ago, four years ago, it was around four to five hundred dollars per tip, the tipping fee out at the end at the transfer station. So now I'm told it's probably eight, nine, maybe a little more for an average roof that's added by the contractor to do a roof job. So for some of us retired people on fixed incomes, it's a big deal to pay that. So you multiply times the number, the hundreds and hundreds of roofs that are done every year. It's a big cost to taxpayers. It's a great resource if you think we all are paying to truck that waste out of the area and have it buried in a landfill in eastern Oregon, eastern Washington. It could be reprocessed here. It's a delicate matter, to recall or ask contract me, with Lakeside, because it's a big piece of equipment to bring up here in a global once or twice a year process. But I should think the county could go maybe to DOT or somebody else, or legislator, and find out, is there a way to have like a circuit riding pressure to go around rural counties that don't have a big volume, who are not quite there to process it yet. But as you know, so home is peers, the major counties, King County, they've been doing this for years. And they put out their contracts, I think it's still a, what, six percent mix? And they use that material and save all those fossil fuels. So it's a great, you know, climate change, kind of a green practice to install. Another small idea, not walking on the trail, I think it'd be great, is kind of a thank you to Norm Dix, if some of the 60,000 cubic yards of dam construction, deconstruction concrete could be used if there's a need for some ballast along the trail route. And then if some of the rock coming out when they redo the portals, haul the fall rock out of the tunnels, if there's a way maybe to give that to the park so they can use that local natural rock when they shore up some of the white areas on the 101 job, and if they have to do any of it on a federal highway job on East Beach. So it's a natural-looking rock. When they did it a few years ago with that, you might remember the big barge on the lake, it must have been a, oh, I don't know, a twelve-inch minus or something rock. They carted around on that barge and then placed it. And today you can still see those artificial-looking, non-natural-looking areas where they beefed up the shoreline. So if you could use the natural rock, that could be used. And in an ideal way, if the county could have a very flexible contract to work with probably a rigid, but a constrained and federal contract, you could think of an ideal situation, and I think Joe's pretty good at this, to think of a way maybe to haul the rock, backhaul asphalt, or have a mix either way. And that Ranger pit, I hope, would be used for some asphalt if the county wanted to buy some of that, or if it's given for free to cut the transportation cost. So there's, it's the kind of thing, it's going to intrigue me, not being an engineer. And Ross would obviously say, well, half of that is fantasy. But, you know, some of those other things might actually work. So it just, it bugged me, so I wanted to come today and pester you. Thanks.
For the benefit of the board and for the benefit of Ms. Doherty, might be interesting to know that it looks like the latest cut that we've got from federal highways engineers that we're working with to design the trail portion, one of the issues that we were facing was the amount of rock that has come down over the years onto the railroad grade and trying to figure out, do we need to cart it out? Well, they've put together a modified vertical alignment that uses a lot of that material. So they're, they're trying to cart out minimal amounts, basically use it all for the construction purposes. So that's a real efficiency gain there. So if we can do that, that's going to cut down on trucking costs. All this other stuff we'll work on, but that right there, we're at least not having to haul out a whole bunch of mountain debris in order to get this thing done. It'll be used.
Yeah, I may follow those meetings, Mike. And alternative three right now appears to be the preferred alternative. And I believe that the comment period for that will end sometime early July. And then the briefing they gave us after the Parks Service indicated that contracts would be opened sometime in October. And because they're allowing the contractor to make operational decisions such as working at night, I think there is an opportunity, you know, if any of the people with the Discovery Trail wanted to offer comment, you know, you can do that online, to just plant the idea in their mind that there's this opportunity to use that material if we've got a suitable place, you know, there's some problems with leachage. I think it's a great idea.
Interesting if we could, some solid waste, I think the issue was that, obviously the folks from solid waste needed the landfill volume with the roofing. We did talk at times about using a pit for a holding center and then maybe we would charge a little bit, but then that could help the landfill. It would be interesting if we stored it, could we get a recycling a couple of times a year? So I'd encourage you to keep looking at that. And just if we charged a little bit, then we could backfill the loss of revenue to landfill possibly.
And we have a meeting, you could, who monitors that, and my gut feeling on, is that we're, we're kind of right on the cusp. We're just producing a volume that is hitting right up to the edge of being viable to do something along the lines of perhaps what Commissioner Doherty is suggesting. There's lots of different options that you can branch out from there, but having some place to store is, is the key. Not wanting to remove a resource from the landfill that's, or the transfer station that's pretty much struggling to stay viable economically too. So there's a lot of facets and we kind of maybe can keep the door open to all these possibilities and then keep you updated. So we'll be watching.
If you can ask her, she has me updated, we can bring her in for a session. Just discuss the options around there.
I'll set that up.
As I said, in a couple of those meetings for us, my perception is we don't have the quantity.
And you have to store for a while.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
And then there was the loss of the, Bob was always reminding us of the loss of revenue to the landfill. There could be a way maybe to...
If it's long-lived, it will happen.
But if we had a place to store, they came in a couple of times, and you're lost, it sounds like then it would be possible. Yeah. Good. Is there anybody else wish you to make a comment before we open the public hearing? If not, open the public hearing and I'll throw it over to the administrator for discussion.
Thank you. Back on, this hearing is considering a debatable emergency, consideration of a resolution adopting a debatable emergency for Health and Human Services, chemical dependency, mental health, for increased staff hours to support transition of local treatment providers to the homeless behavioral health organization in the amount of $15,295. You may remember on, back on March 21st, we had a work session where Iva Keane and we laid that our human services planner, Julie Anderson, half of her, 25 hours a week of her, or 15 hours a week of her, she's in the state of 25, was covered under a DSHS contract that was going away. And we have in our policy that for any grants positions, that when the grant goes away, so do, so too does automatically the hours supporting that grant. So Iva came in and asked the board to consider using general fund monies to, ultimately, I mean, it's pass-through, it's HHS monies that get given via the general fund once a year into the ending fund balance, to cover for the rest of the year, the extra 15 hours that would be going away to support transition to the new behavioral health organization because we're still not sure where that's going to come and where those monies are going to come. And we didn't want to reduce the position at this critical time while we were, while we were still in the process of determining how much that was going to come. The board reacted favorably, asked questions, and therefore it would become a bunch of emergency to approve the additional money, $15,295, that would take to cover the additional 15 hours of contract for the rest of the year. So that's the staff report.
Questions, Jim?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to comment again that this is, this transition is one of the most complex challenges facing county government right now. And I really appreciate your leadership. I bet in, in your staff's leadership, coming up with a really creative solution to try, to attempt to address one of the, one of the biggest challenges of this transition. So I think this is an example of creative thinking, which helps to pay dividends for residents of our county.
You know, I agree with that. I would thank you very much.
We need three in a row. I think what the board's trying to say, we're going to miss you when you leave the department.
Still a couple months.
Still a couple, just a couple months, so it's going to go by quick. So I think that's what the board is probably trying to say. I'm happy about it, but happy for you.
Thank you.
There's no objection, open the public hearing. Nobody's signed to testify. Does any member of the public wish you to make comment with regards to the consideration of the debatable emergency? Okay? This is your great chance. No? With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded?
It's moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. What's the board?
I move to adopt the debatable emergency that will increase staff hours within the Department of Health and Human Services to support the transition of local treatment providers to the homeless behavioral health organization.
Seconded? It's moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other member of the public wishing to make any general comment for the board? Seeing no one, executive session for the rest of this week, the calendar stands as presented with William Short, our pool district meeting this afternoon. So if there's no objection, we'll continue this week's meeting until next Monday morning at 9:00 AM. No objections, board?